Workshop that we're going to put on that we're going to cover several different aspects today of accreditation. It's kind of going to be the overarching idea of what we're doing. But you'll see a lot of what we do all the time wrapped into it. So I'm going to, we're going to kind of do an overview and move on. You do have in your packet, and if you'll pull out the PowerPoint, so if you have notes you want to take, and we'll ask you to go back into this packet to, maybe, I'll ask you to go back into the packet as we do different activities, okay? All right, so just an overview of what we're doing today. We are going to talk about our accreditation review. We are, it's coming up this year. Then we're going to move into our strategic plan. Not all members of the board currently were here when we developed it. So we kind of want to go back over that process today. And hit two of our areas, the academic excellence and community collaboration. Then we'd like to, if we have enough time today, or if you'll grant us enough time today, to follow up with some statewide assessment and accountability changes that are coming through, just so that you all are aware of what's going on, okay? All right, so we are coming into, this year we will be doing accreditation. And just to give everybody a high level idea, accreditation is important, especially for our second, secondary students as they move into colleges. It is part of board policy that if we have students, secondary students, who come from one school to another, one of the things we have to do to check, to see if we accept their credits, is to see if they're coming from an accredited secondary school from where they're from. So accreditation is a pretty big deal. It actually helps students meet, oh, actually I'll get to that in a minute. So it also is a process that acts, asks you to kind of critically evaluate your systems. It kind of used to be, at the beginning, it was tell us all your accolades that you, that have happened in the last 20 or so years. It's kind of switched over to you have all these accolades, but what do you do to continuously improve each year? So it's more about your vision and your strategic mission. What does it matter for, again, said as secondary students are transitioning into a university system or a college system, it actually allows them to have scholarships. The parents, it allows you to know whether that is an institution that is quality, and it gives your, your businesses and your community areas an understanding that we try to excel in everything that we do. We might not be perfect, but we're constantly growing. So it is a six-year term. Every six years, we come back up for accreditation. And this year, we are in that preparation and self-assessment, where we do some reflection, some collection of evidence that demonstrates some of our strengths and some of our challenges and what are our next steps. After, they will come, that's the, that's the time we're in right now. The, we will have an engagement review where people review actually all of that data. And then they'll send us a report to let us know if we're approved or provisionally approved. And then a little bit later down the road, we get an approval from the global commission. And then over the next five years, you do progress monitoring and following up. So since, just I kind of went back in some of the items that I had in my office drawers from the last people that were here. Our timeline is in March of '24, that is our tentative timeline for the accreditation review to come in and review all of the documents that we have. It's actually virtual. They actually don't come. They used to come, and we'd set them up in a hotel, and they would make travel around to all the different schools. But now it is you collect documentation and they review it online. And we set up some Zoom appointments so that they can talk to individuals at the schools or at the district. In 2018, we actually had a district performance accreditation. So we're now in that cycle where we're coming back around. We were accredited that year. In 2015, we actually had a progress review report because in '14, we're only provisionally reviewed, accredited. We had to do some more work. They had to come back and verify that the work we had done was moving forward.
While she's talking, I just tell my fellow board members, and I wish the other one was here, nobody really understands how meticulous and complicated this stuff is because it never ends on the instructional end. And we're about teaching and learning. Everything else we do is to facilitate teaching and learning. And this is just a portion of the stuff that they have to do. So Laura, go ahead and continue.
And we, it used to be that each school did their own accreditation. So each school would have to do this on their own timeframe every six years. They would have a group that would come, probably Holly, you were part of, probably part of that. So was I at Black High School, where you would come, and you know they're coming. So you do all this great work and do the dog and pony show. And then they would leave with your next steps. But probably about 20, 2008, probably, David, you were still superintendent. We went from school accreditation-
District-wide accreditation.
To district-wide, which puts the onus less on a school, more on the district, to show the systems that we have in place to support all of the schools.
Yeah, I went through that, I remember. It was a big deal.
So Cognia is our district accreditation. It's who we use. However, you might not know what Cognia is. There's actually a, that is an actual picture of a certificate that hangs in the lobby. Each school has one as well that they hang in their school. But it's over 125 years old, but it's been known as Saks Casey. Before that, most recently, it was Advanced Ed. So it's kind of gone through a norming of grabbing all these different entities and making it one. Again, why Cognia? It's actually the largest world's accreditation and improvement network. You can see the amount of schools that they actually accredit across the world. And in Florida alone, they have 118 systems. So you know that there's only, you know, a certain number of school districts. But a system could also be a group of Catholic schools and a diocese, okay? So we are actually an accredited system. We're one of those 118. But we also have, this is the state of Florida, their membership just for this year. All right? And so that kind of just gives you a high-level overview of what is accreditation. And truly, it shouldn't be a one-time thing we're planning for. Everything we do should be working towards, when they are here, they see our systems that are in place and that those systems get to move us forward all the time. So we're going to go, I'm going to let Jonathan take over for strategic plan because that is a big part of the accreditation.
Laura, could you also mention about our accreditation process involving our CT, I mean our-
STEM.
STEM.
So this year, you see how they have 52 STEM schools. So Cognia also has a STEM accreditation. We are going to be going through district-wide accreditation in STEM. They like for you to compare the two things together. So in that case, it is on each school to do their own. Dr. Coleman is heading that up. But because we have very similar structures in K through 12th grade in our STEM catalog of things we do, we are doing it together with all of them. So Dr. Coleman is going to leave that, lead that. It is a different set of standards and a different process, but it does kind of go along with the accreditation process that we're going to talk about today. And we can bring that, we can bring that information to you at a different time.
And Laura, I believe I was told that we are one of few districts-
That is correct.
That if we earn this, that actually would hold that designation.
That is correct.
It's a big deal. And when we went to district-wide accreditation, that was a huge monumental step. And then this would be even a better one. But it's just, it's so intricate. People, it's easy to cherry pick little negative stuff here and there, but I mean, y'all got it going on. I'm so proud of-
Well, and actually, coincidentally, next week, we are going, if I'm getting ahead of y'all, stealing your thunder, let me know. But we're supposed to be granted a designation from the WASED organization.
So our elementary schools were designated as WASED, that's a STEM. That's a STEM program. They were designated as WASED schools last year because they have a certain number of pathways that we have in the elementary schools. This year, our secondary schools are going to be recognized as WASED schools that have their same number of pathways for them.
Dr. Coleman's coming in the door now.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon, Mr. Hinkie.
So as Laura talked about, a big piece of accreditation is this idea of continuous improvement. And when you look at a lot of the, the standards they have, they talk a lot about continuous improvement. And so I want to take you through just a quick review of strategic planning and how that kind of connects and where that, where we've been with that. And then we'll dive into a couple of pieces along the way. If you remember on one of Laura's slides, they talked about having to do kind of provisionally accredited at one point. Part of that was around not having a robust strategic plan in the district. And so back in 2014, the school board at the time, in response to that, created a strategic plan themselves. And then in 2020, we began the process of developing a new strategic plan for our district. And that was approved by some of you on the board then on June 15th in 2021. And one of the big differences between the 2014 and the 2021 plan that was developed is that in 2020 and 2021, we facilitated as district leaders and had a lot of opportunities for stakeholders to have input into the new strategic plan. So we had teachers, staff, parents, leaders, students, civic organizations, lots of different community members who had opportunities to have input. And as part of that process in 2021, we included their voices as stakeholders in updating our brand and kind of defining who we are as a school district. And so you'll see that kind of woven throughout the strategic plan. I always like sharing this slide, this by the numbers slide. We had over 100 people who helped out with creating the Portrait of a Graduate, which we'll talk about shortly. We put out a community-wide stakeholder survey and had 1,358 responses to that. We had 222 participants who provided input into our vision, mission, and values, 74 members of working groups, and 286 points of feedback on draft documents that we put out there. So we really did try to get stakeholder input throughout the development. As I mentioned, one of the things we did was develop a new brand that better reflected us as a district. And so we kept that, that ship theme. But if you look at our logo, we were able to embed our focus on graduation, our community's appreciation for the outdoors, and the importance of literacy in the new brand and logo. And when you look at our strategic plan, it is broken up into four different pieces. We are Putnam is the section that defines who we are and our vision, mission, and values. Our Portrait of a Graduate is an important piece of that. And then our course of action and measuring success. So just a reminder of our vision. And as I share the vision, mission, and values, one of the opportunities that we did with stakeholders was for the vision and mission, we collected, they got to put in, like, what would you like our vision to be? What would you like our mission to be? And I took all of those submissions, and we ran it through a platform that counted words and highlighted the most used words. And so the most things that were important to our community when it comes to vision and mission were the, were the phrases and the words that were put into our vision and mission. So really, it came from their input. And the things that were important to our mission, again, were phrases and important concepts from our community that really came out as the most used. And then the activity we did for values, we did this with students. We did this with teachers and leaders, and we did this with community members. And the activity we had them, we gave them groups of values, and they had to rank them. And so our district values include two from students, two from employees, and two from our community. And so our values are representative of what our students, community members, and employees value. I mentioned the Portrait of a Graduate. I've given each of you a poster that you can either keep on the diocese or you can take with you. The poster includes the specific descriptions for each of the competencies. But our Portrait of a Graduate does have the six competencies. This came out of an AVID conference that we brought back and developed here. And it kind of highlights those competencies that we want our students to develop as, as traits that they have for future success once they graduate, not only in school, but they can take into the workforce with them. And so those are the six companies of our Portrait of a Graduate. And then our course of action, we, through stakeholder input, created five different areas of focus. Those areas of focus up there in that graphic show the important pieces where we are working to improve in. And one of the things I want to do with you today is kind of look at the, the areas of focus have strategies, long-term strategies. But each year, we do action steps. And so one of the things, if you will look in your blue packet or your blue folder, you have a action report from '22, '23. Ashley, a little bit later, will show you where you can find '21, '22 as well. But each year, we do an actions report of all the different things in each of the five areas of focus that were accomplished in the prior year as we think about this, the importance of continuously improving, right? So in this model of continuous improvement, you put things in place and you start doing things. And the next year, you don't stop doing those things. Those become ongoing, and you refine them and you get better at them, but then you also add new things. And so each year, our actions report highlights those new things that were accomplished that become embedded parts of our district culture and our ways of work. And so what I'd like to do is just give each of you just a moment or two, pick one of the areas of focus that is of particular interest to you, and just take a minute and kind of review some of the highlights of '22, '23. And then I'm going to ask you just to share out a couple of things that maybe you didn't realize we had done last year. Or maybe there's something in there that you got to be a part of, and you're so glad that we, we started that. So let's just take a minute and let you review a little bit of that actions report. So at this time, I'd welcome any comments from you as the board. Like I said, the '21, '22 is available online as well. That has a different set of completed actions. And then another piece that we do on our website, it's on our website, and it'll be updated because we just finished this process for the coming year, is we will put on the actions that are proposed for this coming year, for the '23, '24 school year. So any comments from you-
On page four for me, the whole child. The whole child is what we do, differentiated, differentiated learning. You know, not all kids can learn, but not all kids learn the same way in the same day and the same speed. So it's continual progress monitoring, curriculum improvement. And then that, that brings into the people that are career-oriented, which you had earlier in the packet, that talked about career pathways and partnering with, like, the clerk of court's office and, and, you know, automotive centers. And then we had a parade the other day, where we had kids welding in the parade just to show people that it really does happen. And I'm really pleased. I mean, can we do better? We can always strive to do better, but I really, I am very pleased with what I see here, Jonathan. This is very nice.
And that was the one I chose because I think during the time we were asked to get on a group that we were interested in, I remember, if memory serves me correctly, being a part of this. And I think Benford was the head of it, and Ashley was a part of that. And some of the very things that we talked about seeing happen in the community, they've come to fruition. The Black History Celebration and the Hispanic Celebration, these things have happened. Now, I did highlight too, that I wasn't aware of, and I'm pleased to hear it, implemented specialized meal options and meal planning for students with food allergies. I remember the first time I realized the student was allergic to peanuts. I was at Price Middle School as a principal, and they called. And I'm thinking, this is a joke, you know, because I'd never heard of it. And all of a sudden, it dawned on me, it was real. So I had to run and meet with her teachers, and we set up a special place for her there, on that platform there at Price Middle School in that little room. And she could take in a student. But to now know that, I mean, Food Services is doing this, this is great. And we would always make sure that mother had a menu so that she could prepare her child. The other thing I highlighted that I wasn't aware of, and I should have known that we had it, but I just didn't know, this is concrete now, sponsored Special Olympics at Mellon Learning Center. These are great. The others I was aware of, and they're great as well. But it, it just shows that we are, that we were heard when that committee met and when the other committees met, and you all implemented them.
This is our roadmap. Everything we do is, this is our map.
It is. And you're addressing, when I, when I said the whole child, you're addressing not only the kids who come from the best and brightest, college-educated parents, high-income, wage-earning families, to the kids who, who are homeless. And, and you're getting there. You know, it, it just, I, I know how hard it is to meet the needs of all. We take anybody and everybody that shows up at our door to educate. And that is our job. And regardless of whether they, you know, had to sleep in a tent in the woods, which we've got kids that do, and are living on the, on a beach somewhere. But anyway, and of course, Rick's been at it long enough. And I guess you were raising Hawthorne, so you pretty much know the clientele we're dealing with. I'm, I'm really, I mean, I, I know I talk too much, but I try to give it in context of something I've been doing a long time. So I just, you know, we'll figure it out and do more. But I know you guys will bring it back to us when you need it.
Madam Chair, we actually, and Jonathan alluded to it, we actually go through a very extensive review process each summer. Our leadership team, got about 25 people in here, and we, we break it up and go through it item by item to see if we've, if we need to change those action steps or, you know. And Jonathan actually presented kind of a, this past week, kind of a, what would you call, like spreadsheet or something, where we actually went through and looked at those that were completed and those that we need to work on, and ones that have been changed and so forth.
Any other comments?
Well, I think we would be remiss as a board if we didn't recognize the special facility work that was done, you know, to get a new school started. And, you know, I kind of feel like if we address the whole child, then a lot of these other pieces, like academic excellence and things, kind of all fit together. I do think that we do an excellent job at our partnerships with different colleges. It amazes me the opportunities that are there for our kids if, if they want it. And so I, now, so all of these are act, so all of you will review all of these and say, no, we didn't do a good job with that, or we have done something.
These are all the things we did. So the actions report is the accomplishments from last year. What's on the website that will be updated because we finished the review, so updated within the next week or two, will be the actions that we are working on for this coming year. So this is, these are all the finished things from last year.
I did notice that we were doing a better job of recognizing our kids that had excelled either in the academic FHSA team. That was a lot of kids, and all the statewide things.
And that was an action that was created a year ago to implement during the '22, '23 school year. And so you saw a more prioritized focus on acknowledging students and recognizing that last year because that was something we knew we wanted to do.
And as the superintendent said, the roadmap, because we have this roadmap, it's harder for us to fumble or drop the ball because it's right there. We know what we need to be doing. We're not trying to pull it out of the air again. It's here.
Melrose and Middleton-Burney are kind of on the same page, but, but with different clientele, you know. So Middleton-Burney, majority of the kids can't speak English when they come to kindergarten. But Melrose, a little different. So it's just, they're all working on the whole child. And that's what I like. Good writing that.
If I could, just on the premier workforce part too, I was very happy. I've, I've got a stepdaughter that, you know, is seeking employment in other counties right now, based on where she's living. But I told her specifically, I said, you know, reach out to their district board. At least in Putnam County, I know that we've got, you know, mentors for new teachers. And they've got, after one of the presentations, that we have people that when you are applying for one job, they're like, have you ever thought about being a teacher? And I was really impressed with that, you know, recruiting, yeah, the parent. And, and I told her, you know, hopefully, in the counties you are applying for, they have something similar to, to draw you in and help you along the way. Because, you know, a lot of college graduates, they've, they've been educated in certain ways, but they don't always know how the system works. So I, I liked seeing that. And I was curious, though, what the employee exit checklists are.
Honey just walked out. So one of the things that we had brainstormed a year, you know, a year and a half ago was being able to better answer why employees do choose to leave. And so one of the things her department has implemented is a checklist of questions that are asked so that when people choose to leave, we get a better sense of why so that we can address those things. And so that really speaks to retention. And so I, that's about as much as I know about the checklist. But that is a process they implemented to, to get that input so that we can learn from that and respond to it.
One of the things, Mr. Hinkie, and to, to the leadership group, the School Board Association started that mentoring program, remember? And I drew, well, they gave me a person from, from Alachua County. And she wanted to hear about our strategic plan. That's just how detailed and specific it is. So I turned on to Thomas for, for some questions and answers. I turned on to Mrs. Odom, and some may not have answered because she's, she's kind of in your face and aggressive.
Actually, I mentored their superintendent too, so he might have got it from me.
I spoke with her, Mr. Goodyear.
They are looking at what we do.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Jess.
Yes, I took that home, but I'll wait though. I don't have anything to charge.
Ms. Goodyear, I actually had a conversation with her at one point.
Okay, okay, all right. I had to give it to you all because I didn't make any mistakes. And I was pleased. So to someone else.
We had a great conversation. All right, so that's kind of the high-level overview. One of the things that we want to do today to kind of connect the work we do around continuous improvement in our strategic plan to our areas of focus is we're going to dive kind of more specifically into one piece of academic excellence, not all of it, but just one piece around curriculum assessment and accountability, since we have been navigating a lot of recent changes at the state level related to curriculum assessment and accountability. And then after, the second piece that we want to dive into in response to some questions you've had as a board is within community collaboration, the communications piece. And that's when Ashley will come up. And in between those two, Laura's going to take you through a process with the strategic, with accreditation that we go through. And so you'll get a chance to, to practice a little bit with her. But right now, what I want to do is kind of dive into academic excellence. The past two years, as you're well aware, have seen a lot of legislative changes at the state level. And so we've had the implementation of new Florida standards in reading and math, as well as changes in social studies, civics, U.S. history. We have implemented the new statewide progress monitoring assessments called FAST in both ELA and mathematics. And those are K through 10, or K through geometry in math, K through 10 in ELA. And so in response to that, we've obviously had a lot of professional learning and support we've had to do. Uh, and so in response to that, we've obviously had a lot of professional learning and support we've had to do. We also adopted two years ago new reading materials and one year ago new math materials. Uh, along with the change of standards and all of the new materials, uh, we uh, had to redo our benchmark assessments in core subject areas. And then of course, we know that coming very shortly, um, our future statewide accountability changes when it comes to school and district grades. So because they're having so many changes, we've had to be very responsive as a district to make sure that we have systems in place that are easily able to support our leaders and our teachers with those changes, as well as being able to make sure that our systems are strong enough so that all those changes don't break us, right? So we got to have good systems in place so that we can respond to those changes in a timely manner. Um, one of our big goals all along throughout these changes have been just to make sure we navigate them better than the district did the last time we had all these changes. Um, because we don't want to come out uh, with schools performing at the very bottom. And so we are really working hard to stay ahead and on top of all these changes. One of the things we had to do, and this is part of accreditation, is having a balanced district approach to assessments. Our district approach is actually on a one-pager in your folder, if you want to pull that out while I'm talking. Uh, our district approach is, uh, includes formative, benchmark, interim, and summative. And that one-pager is what we use uh, for common language. So we use that as common language not only in our assessment and accountability department, but also for professional learning and coaching. On that one-pager, it includes the purpose of the assessment, who uses the assessment, how that data is used, as well as the impact of those assessments. And so I've given that one-pager to you um, to help you kind of understand our approach to assessment, just so that as school board members, when you are, you know, and you're asked questions, you feel a little bit more informed about that. Um, as part of our response and changes, we uh, a few years ago brought on a new platform um, to help us not only administer assessments, but also to serve as our data warehouse and reporting so that we provide much more timely and easy access, not only to our leaders, but also to our teachers, so that when assessments are given, they're able to see that data in a timely manner and respond to the needs of their students. And so School City, if you've heard of School City, that is um, that platform, and it does serve both purposes. It is our data warehouse and reporting system. It is also our assessment administration for many of our district benchmark assessments. Um, when we get those fast, um, when we get those fast data files from the state, when we get SAT scores, all those data points are input into the platform for teachers and leaders to access. Another piece of accreditation is having systems and uh, tools in place to help monitor continuous improvement. One of the things that we have been working on the past two years is something we call our PCSD Trend Walk. Uh, when you look up there on the screen, there are many things that are required of us. And we could choose to hand off to our principals five or six different tools that you have to use. But what we have chosen to do is to develop one tool that is ours, that meets the needs of all of these, so that we are only learning to be good at one thing and not trying to be good at six. And so uh, our Trend Walk incorporates our practice profiles. Uh, it's used for our school literacy leadership team walkthroughs. These are all state board rule requirements or legislative requirements. Uh, we use it also for accreditation. So if you don't have something in place, when you go through accreditation, you have to use one of their tools. And so instead, we're able to use our own tool that our principals are familiar with. And so it replaces something called the Elliot for accreditation. And then again, just like our one-pager for our assessment approach, it is our common language for professional learning and coaching. This is also the tool that our schools use. Uh, last board meeting, you approved all of their school-wide improvement plans. This is the tool they use to monitor those. Uh, and then it supports our district mission. So when you look at having a district mission that is student-centered and that fosters that learning environment that's safe and supportive for kids, and the, the Trend Walk helps us to monitor those things as well. And so again, this helps us monitor um, for continuous improvement. It's a tool not only used by the district, but also by school leaders. And just, I wanted to give you a sense of what does this data look like in Kickup? This is a platform, uh, you may have heard of Kickup before. Kickup is also our district-wide registration system for professional learning. It's also the system where our coaches uh, log the role, the hours and the work they do in schools supporting teachers. Um, so it collects all of that data for certification points, for coaching hours that are put in by our district coaches from the Department of Teaching and Learning. And so in our Kickup platform, we as district leaders and as school leaders can start to see where are we performing on the Trend Walk? And then how do we, how do we put supports in place to help us grow our schools? Uh, this is very different than our evaluation system. So our Marzano Eye Observation is built around evaluating a single teacher. Uh, our Trend Walk is about improving the entire school. It's not just about calling Jonathan out for what I'm not doing. It's about how do we move our entire school? If we're good at this piece, what is the next step? That one percent improvement every day.
And, and Jonathan, just to, yeah, I guess my board members that are former school educators, Linda, and you guys, you, you need to realize that just about the time we get all this stuff going full steam and we're feeling on top of the world.
And understanding.
The legislature and the Department of Ed are going to change.
They move the key.
They're going to move the goalpost. And the same schools in the same poverty-stricken communities, areas throughout the state, are going to go right back to failing schools. And it's all done to try to declare failing schools so they can provide opportunity scholarships. I don't, and I'm not in the legislature, so I can't tell you if I agree with that or not. I don't particularly like the way it's done because you can have kids in, in, you know, and I think Dr. Coleman could probably tell me how many po- Title I school districts there are in the state of Florida, but I can't seem to get a, an answer from the state. They've got Title I pack pockets in counties, but they won't consider them all. Uh, but that's where sixty percent of the students live below the poverty rate. And not an excuse, but it's why we address the whole child and you, you take every, every problem individually. But go ahead, Jonathan.
I want to salute Jonathan and his team. I, I've actually been involved in these instructional reviews. We've done several of them already, did one today. And it really does give you a snapshot, again, not the individual teacher, but the entire school.
Right.
You look at what those trends are instructionally. And the neat thing is, the principals had, had, I say so with how this instrument looks. And we're all about autonomy and all that, but this is a district vision. And it really is, we want to provide district resources, but we need to know where those areas of concern are. So, you know, I salute you and uh, putting that together has been very effective.
So the Trend Walk is a piece um, that we're able to kind of use again as part of accreditation, uh, to have that system in place. And speaking of instructional reviews, um, we are conducting those during the month of October and November. Again, this helps us with accreditation, um, instructional reviews. Uh, a long time ago, we're only done at schools that were D or F schools because they were state-required, um, and they still are, but we do them for all of our schools so that we have an opportunity to help support, um, no matter what school you're at, we should always be working to improve student outcomes. And so this just gives you a sense of what an agenda looks like for an instructional review.
Oh, excuse me.
No, you, you're fine.
So this is when you go to Palacai, or does Palacai come to us?
We're going to get to that piece in just a minute.
Oh, okay.
There's both.
Okay.
Um, so, no, you're great. So the instructional review, we as district leaders go to the school and we walk the building with the school leaders that are there. And so we start those meetings um, by having the principal of the school share with us what their SIP areas of focus are, and also what they've, kind of the state of their school, what they've been working on, vacancies, things like that. Then we talk about the Trend Walk and then head out into classrooms. We usually spend about an hour and a half to two hours walking classrooms. Um, so today, uh, we were at Kelly Smith Elementary, actually, and we, we got into twenty-one classrooms, right? So you get a nice snapshot of what's happening, not in just individual classrooms, but across the school. Then we come back and we do two things as a group. We identify celebrations that we can share with the principal, and the principal can share with his or her staff. And then we talk about next steps. So how do we take where the school is performing now? And what is that next, um, realistic next step to work on over the next few months? So we're always constantly moving to the right. And then we pull up the Trend Walk data and talk about that data and where we can grow, and then wrap that up. So it usually just lasts the morning, we're gone by lunch. Um, and that's a valuable tool for our school leaders. Um, I believe what you were referencing, Ms. Gilliard, was our data conversations. This is when our principals actually come to us. And this is another structure for continuous improvement that aligns with um, the Cognia standards for accreditation. But we've been doing this structure actually since twenty fifteen, sixteen. Um, it allows our school principals to come together here at the district office usually, or sometimes at CLO. There's a combination of prepared data that they come to share with their colleagues. It isn't just about coming and sharing with the district, it's about coming and sharing with our colleagues. Uh, and then they have a chance to ask questions and talk about the things they're doing, or how are you getting such good data here? Or, you know, yours looks, in this area looks really good, can I, what can I learn from you, right? And then part of that day is also in-person data analysis, where we take the principals through data analysis together in a supportive environment to help them look at and think about improving their school. And so in November here, where we have our first one for this school year, we'll be looking at ELA and mathematics day hor- data by cohort. The neat thing about looking at it by cohort is you're looking at, for example, if you are Palaca junior, senior, you have incoming seventh graders. Well, we need to understand where they came from as sixth graders because sometimes we just assume things like the students come in low or things like that. But really, this past year, our elementary schools sent phenomenal achievement of our sixth graders up to seventh. And so they need to recognize that they're getting students who can read proficiently, and we need to not lower expectations, but raise our expectations. So they spend a lot of time looking at cohort data, science and social studies, district benchmark data, early warning system, that's EWS, that's things like attendance, behavior. Uh, we look at our graduation cohort data and then also talk about their school improvement plan actions and how they're implementing.
Okay, and the early warning data that you use for our third graders because that's the grade we have the retention in.
Yes, ma'am.
So when they come in, the, the elementary schools, they look at their data and they say, okay, I have struggling readers over fifty-one percent. What are you doing that's different at this school? And how can I help these students? So that at the end of third grade, they're promoted to fourth, and won't have to go to the summer reading. Now, that's a great benefit for them that get to go to the summer reading program to enhance it and to hopefully move them to fourth. But, but that's such a, a frightening, it, it's almost like a boogeyman hanging over their heads. If you don't pass the reading, the math, you know, you will be retained. How do we, what, you know?
The pullouts.
I mean, I know you're doing things, but I just.
Yeah, the, the just, the wonderful job they're doing with pullouts and, and working with tutoring these kids, if, as long as we can afford it and they tell us that's what they want, it, it just makes such a difference. And I look at graduation cohort data and I roll into, in my mind, back in the late nineties and early two thousands, a, a child that had a high school diploma or it's, or it's equivalent would make up to three hundred thousand dollars more in lifetime earnings than a child who didn't. And I, I bet you now it's probably double that, you know, because in, in the mid-nineties, we were at forty-seven percent graduation rate in Putnam County. I mean, only less than half of our kids graduated from high school or received a college, you know, a high school diploma, it's equivalent. But uh, you know, we've gone so far there. These kids, you're getting them at the early level and you're getting them at the other levels. And you got state auditors auditing the auditors to make sure we're doing everything the way it's supposed to be done, so that's pretty neat.
And you were talking about making income. Look at these kids that are coming out certified welders that can go into the workforce immediately. And make more than that we started out as beginning teachers.
Just think about that, that's, that's.
We're doing something right.
Eighteen years ago or more, and, and they were, that was three hundred thousand dollars more in lifetime earnings. I bet you it's double now to have a high school diploma, it's equivalent.
All right, I'm gonna stop so you can.
No, I just want to res- I want to go back and respond to your question about third grade. So.
Yes.
In, in the data conversations, we provide a template to them that they either come prepared with or we do together. And what we do is we have areas of focus like grade three ELA, where we're really diving into just third grade and they're looking at their data and we support them and have them evaluate their systems for intervention and are students growing like they should be? And if they're not, then we need to make some adjustments to our systems for intervention. So we take them through that and they have an opportunity to learn from each other as well. The other piece that we talked about, um, that I mentioned kind of to support all of this is obviously professional learning. And so I just want to share with you, um, we have district-wide learning communities that Genazula with the Department of Teaching and Learning host um, for our teachers to really get at supporting them in navigating all of these assessment and standards changes and new resources so that we can, we can continue improving student outcomes. And so recently, uh, these are the learning communities that they've done just in the past uh, three, four weeks. And there's been just a lot of focus on, you know, supporting teachers with resources, new standards, uh, trying to build this idea of collective teacher efficacy that as a group, kind of like we talk about trying to move the entire school, as a group, your grade level is going to be a lot more um, effective if you work together as a group, because each of you brings your best ideas and then we share those best ideas and we improve together. And so rather than isolating, we try to get teachers to work together. And so one of the things that um, we collect also in Kickup, remember I said it does many things for us? But in Kickup, the teachers fill out a, a feedback form at the end of each professional learning community. So you can see this accounts for four hundred and eighty-six data points, the four-point-oh scale. And so this just gives you a sense of collectively, across four hundred and eighty-six teachers, there's a three-point-eight average in almost every single um, question they're asked for just how is that team doing to support teachers? Do teachers feel like that day out of the classroom is a valuable day? That they learn, that they, that helps make them better educators so they can go back and support their students? And so uh, it's just nice to share that with you and also highlight, oops, also highlight um, another aspect of Kickup. So before I turn it back over to Laura to do some accreditation exercises with you related to the standards, do you have any questions about uh, what I covered related to the strategic plan? Or kind of diving into this, these changes with curriculum assessment um, that we're trying to navigate and support our teachers with?
I'm very pleased.
I don't really have a question, but I have a, kind of a, a want.
Okay.
So could, could one of us be like a fly on the wall at, at one of those data? So that it actually, you know, so we see it in action? Is there, is that, could you just attend without attending and?
So are you talking about like professional learning or just data conversations?
Like, yeah, like a conversation, like, you know.
A data conversation?
Where you just see it in action.
I, it would depend on how many of you come, because I think it would have to be noticed.
Right, no, we could just make it where it was just one person.
We do them throughout the year. So we do another one at mid-year, so that one will be, I believe it's the beginning of February or end of January, um, where we look at mid-year data and we support principals in responding to that. And then we do another one right before um, the end of the year, so usually about April, at the end of the third quarter. So we usually do three or four per year. So, you know, if, if one of you was wanting to attend, or even like, one of you attended in the morning, one of you attended in the afternoon, um, we could certainly work something out. Um, but yeah, I think just perhaps emailing um, one of, you know, like Laura or myself, your interest in like, um, you know, what day is it? Could I come from this time to this time? And then we could just say, you know, yes.
Right, okay.
If more, more than one of you wanted to come, we would have to probably publicly notice it. But, um, which I would, we could, but I think our principals would feel more comfortable. You know, just being able to be vulnerable with each other, um, but certainly.
And we could probably send out the template so you kind of understand all the data that we're gathering before anyway. So you can see, because like, when Sandy was asking about early warning systems, it's also attendance and discipline, those kind of things as well. So there's a lot of different data points that they, they, they get to bring. And then there's things that they work on and bring with us too.
And I have all the templates from years past, so if one of you is interested in seeing what one of last year's looks like, um, just email me and I can respond right back and, and share a template with you from prior years.
And the last, um, I guess, planning day, they focused on culture, building their culture. Was that the planning day? They, they did activities on establishing their school.
Early release date.
It was early, that's what it was. Yeah, and that's great. That you have a focus, it's not just you in your room doing your thing, grading papers or listening to me.
Can I have one comment about the um, the data conversations? And I'm not sure if you touched on this, but we started this, like you said, back in sixteen or whenever it was.
Twenty fifteen, sixteen, yeah.
But we, I think back then, we did it, originally did it with some of the turnaround schools, but we made it a district-wide or all the principals, if I recall. But what's interesting is it got. But what's interesting is, it got to be almost a competitive thing at first, like, my data's better than yours, blah, blah, blah. But really, it turned into more, more of cooperation, because they got to share with each other. Everybody's in the same room, and it really is a great learning opportunity for our principals.
Well, and with mobility rates between our schools and Putnam County, you know, a kid can leave Aquila and then go to Browning Pierce and not skip a beat, you know, they're pretty much on the same page. It's pretty neat.
Yep.
All right, so I'm going to turn it over to Laura, to do an accreditation activity with you.
So, all of that is the things that we've been doing, and continue to do, but the reason that that's important on the heels of accreditation, or as we're coming into accreditation, is because a lot of the things you heard him talk about, and those are his high points, are things that we actually look at during accreditation. So in your packet, you should have something that looks like this, oops, nope, yes, can you hold that one up? This, I'm struggling, yes, nope, this, this, sorry. I got it, I'm sorry. So there are actually four key characteristics. Now, here's the night, here's the fun thing about accreditation with Cognia. Every six years, they also, every five years, they change their standards. So I can't look at my report from the last time they were here, and go, oh, those are the same things we did. I have to look at their new standards, and their new, like, areas of focus, and I have to adjust. That's that constant changing for, you know, they, they do a little bit of research, they rearrange things. And so this year, the way that, they were actually developed last year, there's four key characteristics. It's the culture of learning, the leadership of learning, engagement of learning, and growth in learning. And as part of that, there are, under each one of those, there's a different standard. So like, if you look at key characteristic, key characteristic, one, the culture of learning, you can see six different standards in there. And as we are answering questions about, or collecting data about the district, those are the questions we're trying to answer, under each one of those characteristics. So I'll just give you a second to look over those, because we're going to do an activity that is deeper than this. This is just kind of like an idea of what they're asking.
And we're doing key, uh, culture of learning?
There's four different key characteristics.
Oh, you want all of them?
Just, just kind of scan through them real quick, just, just scan.
I know it's a common, common set of buzzwords, but in standard one, where it talks about demonstrate respect, fairness, equity, and inclusion, and free from bias, I'm still not happy with the bias and stuff, because it, I, I understand why it's here, because I guess ninety-nine point nine percent of all school districts in the nation would have it included, but I just like, it's, it's gonna be, there's always somebody gonna pick that apart. And I'm one that sure doesn't like the bias training I've had to go through. I just like leaders cultivate and sustain a culture that demonstrates respect, fairness, and is free from, from restraint, or whatever, you know, but this is, this is still good, very good.
This is what they came up with.
Those are their characteristics, and their thirty standards that we collect data on and respond to, to say, how do we feel as a district, or what is the proof of how we are performing in those four different areas?
I understand.
So, one may not be so, we might have one that's not so great, but the others are. So after you get done doing those, we're gonna do a deep dive. David had brought up the number one, but we're not gonna go there. We're gonna do, you should have a packet. You should have a packet that is key characteristic one, culture of learning, and it is standard number two.
So you ask what?
If you look in, and look back into your folder, and it's gonna look like this. Another little packet.
Mine was second from the bottom. And the title again?
It is key characteristic one, culture of learning, standard number two. So if you look in, and look back into your folder, and it's gonna look like this. Another little packet.
Mine was second from the bottom. And the title again?
It is key characteristic one, culture of learning, standard number two.
Got it.
Thank you.
So each one of those standards that you kind of peruse through, those thirty different ones, there's actually different rating scales. And so, when you think about what is stated, then you can get into what are, what are sample evidences of that? Do we all agree what the highest level of expectation is on that, or what is meeting that expectation? So what I would like for you to do, I gave you in this packet, there is one for each of those key characteristics. There's one under culture of learning, there is one under leadership of learning, there's one of engagement and learning.
Oh, inside this, okay.
And then one in growth and learning. So you have something, you have a standard from each area of focus, and I want you to, we did this with our principals just recently, okay, because part, part of this is, we have to create our own self-assessment, and think about what do we have for evidence to actually show that we do this, okay? So I'm gonna start, we're gonna start with the first one as standard number two. It says, learner's well-being is at the heart of the institution's guiding principles, such as mission, purpose, and beliefs. So elements of that, to the left, you'll see, our staff members demonstrate commitment to learners' academic and non-academic needs and interests. And the institution's practices, possession, processes and decisions are documented and consistent with, and based on its stated values. And so you have some evidence over to the left.
Sample evidence?
Mm-hmm. That, that gives you like an idea, where would you find those things, if you were at a lost, at a loss? And then there's a rubric in the middle.
It's just amazing how you, you, you're just not only focused on the academic, but the non-academic needs that come with this, that, that really grabs everybody's heart and pulls on the strings of the heartstrings to get the kid, and their child, whatever help they need, at whatever age they are, so it's, it's pretty, pretty neat.
So, we purposely paired some of the things that Mr. Hinky covered today, so that you would have a better understanding of some of the things that we do. So I want you to look at that rubric, and think back to the evidence that we have provided today in our presentation, and tell, I want you to assign a level to the district, a level one, two, three, or four, in your head, and then I want you to think about the evidence that you would tell me as to why you would think we are a level one, two, three, or four.
Four being the greatest.
Four is the highest, yes, ma'am.
Do you want us to do all of them, or just the first one?
Just the first one. We're in gradual release.
Okay. So the sample evidence, we have to give it a level?
Well, looking at that rubric...
Just overall.
Overall, overall.
Overall, okay.
So is anybody comfortable to discuss what they picked as the rubric level for PCSD for standard number two?
I have a question first. It just says staff members.
Yes.
What does that cover?
It can be your teachers, your administrators, your peer professionals. When you say staff, it is everyone.
Okay.
Well, I'll, my first inclination, what, was definitely not level one or level two, because of the debt, I mean, the trend walks and constantly reevaluating, but then level three only says consistent, but level four says regularly reviewed, and I feel like, after listening to Jonathan, that we are regularly reviewing. Now, is that at every single school?
All of those processes happen at every single school.
Every single school.
And remember, we're a district accreditation, so it is, our responsibility is, is to ensure that those systems are in place, so that every school has those systems, because they're not trying to prove it individually, unlike the STEM piece, where it's gonna be an individual school accreditation, although we're doing all of them at one time, it's about the system itself.
Then, I, I underscore it continually, demonstrate commitment to learners' academic and non-academic needs and, and interests, and based on what occurs here, with the administrators themselves, with their data, their chats, their sharing, and then the going to the schools, and, and collaborating with other colleagues, even, I'm sure, outside of here, as to, as to what is going on. And Mr. Buckles mentioned an important piece, because our families shift and move, wherein that Browning Pierce can call Jenkins Elementary, and have a conversation about that specific student, because we know what, that's what's happening at one, is happening at all. I feel comfortable either three-point-five or four. I mean, seriously, I mean...
Keep in mind, our learning communities, those teachers actually get together and share.
Yes, yes.
Rick, just looking at the rubric, each one of them, level four, you know, one, two, three, and four, you know, with one being, you know, further down the list, and, you know, seldom demonstrates, to the continuously demonstrates, a commitment to learners' academic and non-academic needs and interests. That means every child is, is, somebody is trying to watch out, and, and there's a, there's a coordinated district-wide game plan to find, not only on your end, to recruit and find the best and the brightest that have the heart, heart like Sandy Gillyards, and Holly, and all these ladies up here, that, that can get out there, and, and, and they see a kid that's not interested in sports, and what are they interested in? And direct them and guide them. I feel really good about it, I really do.
Yeah, the big thing we, I think we have done over recent years, and it's been a ongoing process, we have developed systems, not only academically, but in, in other areas, but again, that's, that's where that continuity comes from.
It does.
And...
You gotta keep...
You know, when things change, you still have those systems in place, and I, I can't be more proud of that.
Yeah.
You, you have scoured, where that parent can go in and see what's going on. You do get calls, and we even got a notice as a glitch, I think it came from Ashley, about a glitch in something, reporting that children were absent or whatever, and they were gonna allow the school to do it until they ironed it out. These are things that guarantee that, that that child is on the right path to success, because the parents get that notice. Then the old-fashioned way we did it was the, the book, you, you remember, every school had one.
The planner.
Planner, that's what we called, gosh, I'm dating myself, it's been so long, planners. And, well, just this morning, I had a conversation with my nephew that lives with us during school, and goes back to Anilarken with the other parents on the weekend, and I made him read it, and he read it, and I said, tell me what is that teacher saying? Well, I ain't playing around. I take, you know, so, so the conversation is there. That teacher wanted us to be aware of, of what was going on in math, doing everything else, but in math, I don't, I don't know what the deal is, but we, we're, we're looking at it. So, it, it, it goes back to the school as a whole, then the grade level, you know, the administrators, everybody takes it personally, and, and are looking out for those kids' well-being, their academic well-being, and as a, as a student as a whole, the group of young ladies we have that we're mentoring, some of them, they, they're pretty good, but they're boisterous, they, they, they're trying to get us to help shake those things, so that in the classroom, they're not disruptive, to the point where others are...
So the nice thing, you know, an educator always wants the top, right? We want a hundred, we want an A. Three is great, three and four is wonderful. If it is a one or a two, that's an area we need to improve in. So, I heard you say four maybe, I heard you say three-point-five, you'd give it a four.
And, and just, you know, Linda earlier, talking about a child, or a young person wanting to go into education, we've got a parent-a-pro program, we're kind of, we're kind of growing our own, looking at them, I know the superintendent has worked with his leadership staff and principals, if they're not, if they're not finding appropriate staff members that are continually demonstrating commitment to learning academic and non-academic needs and interests of students, then we're gonna find people that are. And, and that's, that's the bottom line, that's going on continually, and I like that.
Right, so we did that one together, and we talked about it a little bit. I'd like for you to turn to the second one in the packet, which is number eight.
So go ahead and put my number on here.
I'm not gonna collect them, I'm, I'm...
I'm comfortable with the four, but I was just saying, I, I wanna, Lee Shabi used to say, when you're green, you're growing, when you're ripe, you rot. I didn't want, I didn't want...
Well, there'll be other parts of that, that standard, we don't do so right now.
All right.
So I want you to read number eight on your own, and then I want you to look at your elements, the sample evidence, and the rubric, and I'd like for you to rate how you feel the district is at this one.
Sandy, that's continuous improvement, that's the, not rotting, but getting better.
Okay. Now, when we talk about the, the leaders, that's from the district office and at the school.
So this one in here, when they're, so if you look at the bottom, it says important term. It says, the governing authority is the person or group of people with the highest level of control over the institution.
So that would be the leadership at the school, the principal?
Which generally has the responsibility for oversight and policy setting.
School board.
So it's, it's really the people who sit up here.
All right, which generally has...
Yeah, I feel very, very comfortable with this.
Oh, and policy setting, I did not read all the way down there.
You know, because, because repeatedly, we say, we say, I, I'll see Ms. France, or some of her staff, and the superintendent, and I'll say, you know, we're here for teaching and learning, you guys tell us not only for safety and security, but what we need to do as a board to provide you with what you need, the resources to do pullouts, to do individual ways of, of trying to get these kids to academic levels of, in achievement. So, I feel good with it, but I'd have to go with four again. I'm just, and I guess I'm partial, because I see what's going on with grandchildren all through the schools. Doesn't mean that we can't improve, but we're... Gotta see it to change it. Got to see it to change it.
Are we comfortable with reporting out where you feel like you are as where this standard is for the district?
I say we're above a two.
Yes, I'm inside my head trying to think of us putting us there. I know not the four, but yet we're not.
No, I would say not four.
One, two.
And although we're educators and we want to be at the top.
Yes.
Three is good, three is just great. It's okay.
I don't actually know how.
I tried to.
How we collaborate with.
With the sunshine?
No, no, with the leaders, so, I mean, that's us talking to principals, to district staff.
I don't know what it is.
When, for instance, when instructional division meets, or they have meetings, they meet with their principals, they come up with, or they have a need at an individual school, and they go to the superintendent and say, this is what we need, the superintendent brings it to us as an emergency item or as an item, and sometimes it's cloaked in other stuff, but it's, I know how it works, I mean, we get it, and we're the ones that wind up approving the resources going to find additional support or help to do the things we need to do, or changing policy to benefit the kids that we need to help.
And then, as you were saying, that, that, we get deeper with it when we call if there's a question or concern, because sometimes I've asked you about different programs and, and, you know, how, how does this help us, not questioning, but for my own mind's sake, to know how this advance our students, and I say, oh, that's a good thing, you know, to be put in place.
A couple of, if I may, so like today would be an example of collaboration, it's a workshop format, so you have more opportunities to talk and share and ask questions. Another piece of evidence I've put in here already for you guys is you went through master board training, right? So there are things that you have done that do kind of align with this, just to give you a sense of when you started working on this, but you can kind of see, like.
And we go to those trainings.
Figure out, you know, what evidence do we have, and what has our board done, and what has our, whatever leaders done.
Well, and see, I actually.
So when it says institution, it's not just, it's the district.
District institution.
Each individual school, okay.
Yes.
I was sort of a little higher ranking on there because I don't feel like it means we're doing everything perfectly, or that there's not always room to grow. But, you know, it says that the, if you put in the board, instead of governing authority, the board's policies and decisions are regularly reviewed, I think we're going to be having a review of policy recently, I know I've been looking at some, apparently some others have been too, and, you know, we do need to, and we're going to be reviewing. And I think that does go toward our identified priorities. And then using our respective roles and responsibilities, I, you know, one of us alone, you know, we have our own lanes and we have our own responsibilities, but as long as we are all doing what we can to further the improvement of our entire district, I think, I think we do, we don't always agree, and we don't, you know, always maybe catch every issue that there is out there, but we are attempting to, so I kind of graded a little higher on that one.
And ethics is on our. You've already finished it?
Yes.
Look at you.
I know.
Overachiever.
Teacher my excuse, I was in church all last week, no, seriously, in Jackson.
Well, I did it the first week, because.
I'm gonna go ahead and get mine out the way, but I circled that in here, and that's why if the question comes up about going to those school board conferences down in Tampa, it does, it energized to some of the things that other people are doing, but now they're kind of clinging to what we're doing and hearing and stuff.
And as Jonathan said, he's already put in that you guys did your master board training, right? We also contract with Neola, and we put all of our things on board docs, it's very clear, they help look at the legislative priorities that have been passed, and they help us address those with our board, with our policies. I mean, so those are not things maybe you do personally, but we have worked with people who help support us make those processes more fluid. And again, we, every board member, every board meeting is live so that more people in the community can join and watch. Today's workshop will be put on our YouTube channel so people can watch if they're interested. But I, you know, you think about, it doesn't necessarily always have to be things that are hard to do, it might be things that are easy to do, like contract with Neola, to help us review policies.
You really don't have a choice, we'd never be able to pay the attorney to continually update everything the legislature does that impacts each and every policy that we have, so it's, it's, that's good.
So I'm going to say you guys were really good students, and you get a pat on the back, and I'm not going to make you do the rest of the packet because it is. Or the second packet, we had like a tier one and a tier two. If you have time, we intentionally pulled the ones we did because we felt like it's either something we could cover today and give you like a fighting chance to have like that evidence that you know we have, or something that, like the emergency plans that you guys sit on those closed workshops on so that you understand what our emergency plans are, like, those are things that are in there too. So we tiered them, you had tier one, which was easy, this should have been the easy one, the second one was going to be the harder one, so you can do that if you would like. But we took those, and we actually broke them, Jonathan did this for us at the last principals, the September principals meeting, we took those four different key characteristics and gave them the entire packet of here's key characteristic one, characteristic of the culture of learning, and the principals got in little small groups, and they had to rate the district and put in the evidence that they needed to do, and like, what would you use to prove that you think we're a three? Okay, and some of them would be like, is it terrible if we're three and a lot of them? No, that's great. Is it bad if this one's a two? No, that's where we need to grow, that's what we're doing next. This will be my second accreditation that I'm in charge of kind of, but before that, I was kind of the fix-it on the back end when we were provisionally done, and Jonathan said, Laura, do you remember when you gave me that piece of paper and said it needs to be bigger than one page, make it so, and I was like, yes, I do. After that, after that fix-it time, I can tell you, there is nothing that we tried to do that doesn't automatically fit in this culture of ensuring that that's going to make, I don't want to do something for accreditation, I want the things we do to be able to be used for accreditation. And so all the systems we put in place, we put it through a lens of, does that help us continue to get better? There's lots of things we need to continue to grow on. But we have the systems in place, or when we see that we're missing those systems, we start putting them in place. And those data chats have grown because we're like, you know what, we need to check on the discipline with certain subsets of students, let's make sure we add that slide in there. So each year, we, or each, actually, each time we meet, it's almost like, what, is there a piece that we need to add or layer in so that we're getting better information quicker? Or is that something, we've really kind of got a system in place that that's already coming through all the time, so we don't need to think about that one anymore, we can take that one off. But we really truly intend to do all things through a lens of what helps us in six years, no matter what these standards turn out to be, that we can say that we are in a system of improvement, and that's where we're always moving towards. So you guys have been great students.
How often are your principals' meetings where they come here?
Every month.
Over the data.
Oh, no, we do a principals' meeting once a month.
Once a month.
We work three times a year on the data.
On the data, okay.
It depends, sometimes, it depends on when your school data's coming out, because this is a weird year of that, and we're going to talk about that in a minute, we're not finished, but I want to ask if you guys would like to take a small break?
I would love to take a small break.
So it is, if you guys are okay with this, my clock says two thirty, two twenty-five, can we come back at two thirty-five? Is that ten minutes, is that too much?
No, I'm gonna grab a coffee.
Okay, can we do a ten minute recess?
Yeah, hi, hi everyone, so I'm going to share with you a little bit about the district and school communications, some of the things we've done that apply to the strategic plan and kind of fit in with what we're doing with accreditation, just so that you can see those connections. So one of the areas in the strategic plan involves community collaboration, and we have a number of communication tools that we have implemented here in the district to ensure that we provide our community with lots of opportunity to both receive information for us and give us information, and that's very important. And we're going to talk through each of these just quickly, and then I'll give you an opportunity to ask some questions of me, and maybe if you have some suggestions or ideas, because we're going to cover a few things that I could certainly use your input. The first thing is around branding, so Jonathan mentioned, back in 2021, when we began the strategic plan, we also recognized that it was probably a time to do a brand, what they call a brand refresh, where we take a look at our brand, not just the logo itself, but also what does that logo represent in terms of who we are? And so he shared a little bit of that with you, and so from that, we, as I've told you guys before, Aptogee is our partner for our web, powering our website, and they have a team that is dedicated to branding and graphic designers, and that is who designed our logo. In 2021, we did a brand refresh for the district, we did our four comprehensive high schools, some of those logos don't look that different as they decided to keep the same one and just kind of identified the right colors, and so there were some slight changes. Robert H. Jenkins Jr. Elementary was started that year, so we did a brand refresh for them, and Mellon Learning Center, so if you remember, those were the two new schools. In 2022, we began the work to ensure that all of our schools had good logos that they helped design and develop with some branding guidelines, and this year, we are working on, well, not me specifically, but Aptogee is about to go live with a brand page for every school in the district that people can access to, to see what's available for that school and what the expectations are. And so from that, we have what we call a brand guideline, brand style guide. I'll show you in a few minutes how to, how to access this, if you want to take a look at it further, but I'd just like to kind of show you what we were able to get from our work back in 2021, some of these things you've seen with Jonathan, the vision, mission, values, our tagline, shaping the future, what does our personality show while we're these colors chosen? So it gets very detailed into how we want to project our tone of voice, some language here around our brand anthem, what that means, of course, our logo, and you can see what we had before. We did a lot of surveying of folks about our logo, and there was some consensus on people wanting to keep the water theme and the theme of the ship, if you remember, I know some of you do, Linda, I'm not sure if you realize, the previous logo matches the ship on the outside of our building. So this used to be the Atlantic Bank Building, so if you drive by, you probably, there's a large ship on the front of this building, and that is what the previous superintendent used for the logo, and so we did keep the ship theme. Lots of different versions, how to use it appropriately, what are our colors, this is important whenever we have things that we're designing for both the website or t-shirts or anything we do, we try to stay really consistent with our color schemes. But you can certainly take a look at this, but I did want to show you, after the schools all received theirs, there's actually brand guidelines for every school, so each of their logos, what their colors are. I will tell you, Kathy Oyster and I spent a very long time selecting a shark, she was never happy with the teeth, and now she's not even got to look at it, so I always like to remind her of how hard she worked on the shark and then she left, but, but there was a lot of discussion around these teeth on the shark, and making it not mean and too mean, it was, it was great. So yeah, so there's just been a lot of work done on the back end for that piece to kind of showcase our brand. So with that came a shift in the website, and the district was updated to reflect these brand standards, as well as each of the school pages in terms of color, logo, how it looks, how it's designed, and most importantly, I want to share with you the strategic plan piece in our, in our webpage. So under shaping the future, we have some key areas of interest for folks, but under strategic plan, all of those great things Jonathan just shared with you can be found here. Our course of action, measuring success, when you go to measuring success, you can see here about, you can download a printable version of the actual strategic plan, it's a booklet, and then here, under viewing our progress, you can see information about our graduation rate, our state accountability results, and then the action report that you have in front of you is the twenty-two, twenty-three, but if you'd like to access twenty-one, twenty-two, it can be found there. If you guys have questions as I kind of go through this. Social media, they also provided for us a social media audit when I first took this position, and I'd like to say it's a ton better, and this has been a heavy lift, but I think there were eighty-six different social media pages connected to our district in some way. So that could be a club, athletics, a PTO, anything connected that has our name attached to it, I think there were eighty-six, and only a few of those being managed at the district level. And so this year, we've really pushed hard to ensure that all of the school pages, so if you remember, when Facebook first happened, there were, it was very much like, oh, this will not become business, this is all personal, these are college kids, then it rolled into, oh, we do need to pay attention to this, and so some of us as principals kind of took that on and created pages, they were not business pages at the time, that wasn't really a thing, and, and so we had, it's kind of messy, right? So we've had to do a lot of work to ensure that all of our school pages are business pages, and they are administered by the district so that we own them, and then we can give access when people come and go from those places, we can provide them access to moderate those pages. So we're still a work in progress with this, but these two documents are also available, this audit reviews the pages that were in place in May of twenty-one, and then the playbook is like best practices for what to do with those pages, how to fix them, and we haven't had any of those since then. Then we have an app, so when the website came online, this was back in 2020, the app was available, it wasn't utilized that much, there really wasn't a lot of marketing done to push it out there, but the app is available to anyone that provides you access to live feed news, events, athletics, for both, anything within the district and each school. The other thing that we utilize quite frequently, you talk about the text you receive and little things that happen, this is a system called alerts, it is considered the one-way communication tool, it allows us to quickly push out voice calls, texts, or emails to students and anyone attached to those students and staff, and all different kinds of ways we can do that. This picture here in the bottom right is, well, this picture on the top is a sample of how we push that out if we were using a web browser, and then down here is an example of the archived messages, so everything that's pushed out, we can run a report to see who received it, if it was successful, what it was, you can go back and see Melrose, Ms. Lundie does an amazing job, she uses this tool all the time, but you can see all the different things she's done just in the past few weeks, this is a recorded voice call she made, it saves it in there so we can access that, and different things she has going on. And the important thing to know, both our website and anything that is an Aptogee tool, so these alert. And the important thing to know, both our website and anything that is an Aptogee tool, so these alerts that go out, they're automatically translated into the home language. It's identified in Skyward for that student. So there is no need for a family who may not speak English to take time to do that. It's done for them automatically. Um, and of course, every message is archived. And then rooms, which I know you guys have heard about, um, this kind of brought the app to, to, to everyone's pocket because now we have a tool that is accessed through that app for families that provides the two-way communication. Um, groups can be created for teachers, coaches, sponsors. Again, all messages translated. Um, and all the conversations that are had between teachers, um, or sponsors, coaches, and families are archived and available, um, for public records requests moving forward. So it's very important that that, that be in place. And then just to also consider, you know, we, while we have a lot of great communication tools that are electronic and fancy, I think the most important piece of communication is always that in-person communication. So part of our work has been to create opportunities for people, community, internal, external stakeholders. And some of the things we're quite proud of, um, would be the community forums that we began a few years back. This year, we, um, if you remember, we had community forums we held in the evening. Uh, federal programs did a great job with our parent involvement, just parent involvement district advisory council called PIDAC. Those were morning meetings held a little more frequently. Um, so we have combined those this year and we had our first meeting this morning. There are the superintendent's community engagement sessions. Rick will attend all of those and it will provide an opportunity for us to share information that we need to get out, um, through statute and our abilities, through federal programs and things, and what we're doing and making sure that we have a place to share that information, but also provide an opportunity for people to, to learn about things. So our first meeting was this morning, very informative, shared a lot of great things happening. Um, we did have attendance in person and live on Zoom, so we provide that both ways. Our next meeting, December fifth, will be at Crescent City High School and it will be an evening meeting. So we're trying to vary them throughout the year. Um, and so we certainly, if you have your constituents who have things they want to learn about, that would be a great opportunity for you to say to us, hey, this is the time, could you get someone in to talk about this? And even if they can't attend that, they are recorded and they're on Zoom, and so we can certainly provide that for them. Um, superintendent student advisory council, that's something Dr. Sartre's done for a couple of years now. Um, the group you have in, in the picture there, that was from twenty-twenty-one, I think, is the, that first group we did. So we meet a couple of times each year with those students and that group has grown. We've had principals who want to send more and we're like, that's great. And so it's been a really cool opportunity for not only them to provide us information, but also for them to collaborate and talk with one another and see how things are happening around the district that might be different from one school to another. Um, bond oversight committee and the design advisory committees are, are going. Design advisory committee started last week. We had our first meeting with those folks. And bond oversight committee, you guys are familiar with. And then also just making sure that we push out to civic organization and provide presentations whenever possible. Sometimes we're asked, sometimes we ask them. Um, Dr. Sartre, a few weeks ago, someone called and they canceled on the Kiwanis. They're like, hey, do you have anything? And we're like, we'll be there tomorrow morning. Like, if we will take every opportunity to share what we're doing. So, so that's been also something that we've worked really hard, um, to provide. And so, um, another, one other thing I want to show you guys. And I don't know, I, you know, I assume you guys have perused our website. Um, but if you ever see something in here and you're like, oh, this would be great if it was under quick links or I had a hard time finding this, please let us know that. We always look for feedback on how we navigate, how you navigate things through the, through the site. We know it quite well because we've kind of designed it, but we know that some things can be a little bit cumbersome for folks. Um, under, we've tried to put things as, in sort of organized by department, but under communications, these, this is where you can find those documents I was sharing a few minutes ago. So the brand style guide and the social media pieces there.
Listen to cool.
Mm-hmm.
How far back would it go? Would it for, like, for the Hispanic heritage and the Black history, those special programs you did? How far back, I mean, will it keep it archived?
The, so if it's something that, like, we put in live feed or in news, um, it goes back, I think, everything from twenty-twenty up is here when they moved over to this using Aptogee to power. On the previous website, Lennon has all of that archived, but yeah, you can go back as far as twenty-twenty. Um, news items are meant to be a little bit longer with more text and copy than, than that of live feed, but it could be in either place. And typically, you can just do a search. So like you can do Black History and, um, you can see both celebrations there.
Right.
So, yeah, so that's one way to do it.
And I had a reason for asking, so it's.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Or if you're thinking of something or a photo or something, you're like, I can't find it. We can, if I can't find it, Felicia usually can.
Because I've just been keeping it and keeping it and keeping it on.
Yeah.
On, in my email, not wanting to lose it, wanting.
Listen, we use that a lot to ourselves. I can't tell you how many times we're like, okay, I don't know where to find this on my desktop, but I know I sent it to this person. So let me go look at my set and I.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I, I can delete.
Yeah, I'd like to say I was super organized, but I, I don't know what would happen if we lost our email. That would be detrimental to production, that's for sure. Any other questions for me or, or how we fit in? You know, I think community collaboration, um, it, it, if I remember correctly, Jonathan, when we first started the strategic plan, I don't think that was one of our first areas, right? So we started out with the other four and we found these sort of trends with all of those four that always came back to, okay, and then how are we sharing this and how are we getting input? Until it became very apparent that it needed to be its own category. Um, and so you can also see here in the action steps, some things that, um, that may not be things I've shared with you today, but, you know, things like the work that Justin Campbell has done with our families um, for students who are up for expulsion, to really connect with those families and talk to them about options. That falls under community collaboration. I mean, providing where we saw gaps, and there are still gaps there, um, trying to make sure we're filling those and we are, are doing our part to get input, to share information, and just to make people feel more comfortable with the school district and learning about what we do and feeling very comfortable with saying, hey, I don't understand this or I don't like this. I wish you would do it this way. Um, you know, everyone's perception is their reality and it's important for us to be very, very open and honest with people that we want to do better and we want to learn from our community and make sure that, that we're doing that. And never has that been more clear than, than the community trusting us with these dollars to build these schools.
Well, the job, the job that you're doing has morphed so much over the decades that, you know, I remember years ago when we first hired Ron Dennis, uh, Mr. Overturf did as superintendent years ago to coordinate our, our, our business and our, you know, our public relations or respond to concerns. You know, it was just a, you know, kind of a, a, a notification bureau. I guess you could call it PR if people wanted to, but this is, this is so much different. You're getting, you're getting from the schools and the individual stories and you're putting it out there online. And I think it means so much, particularly to the kids, because they used to run to the newspaper and read theirself, read where they got an award, you know, the school board meeting or something, and now they go online.
Yeah.
Because they don't have, we don't have newspapers, you know, so.
Well, we do.
Well, we don't have, we don't have daily newspapers.
You know, but it's important that we think about generations and what people are used to. I mean, I mean, Dr. Sartre still does the radio, the radio ads and the things that, for, because there's so many people and I mean, our young people, we like, who listens to the radio?
These young people.
You know, but, but there is an entire group out there in the community that is still not on social media.
I know.
They need the newspaper. They need radio. I mean, we have to be very aware of, of who our audience is and, and they all matter.
Now, Fortified Florida comes under Travis, wherein that information is given to him.
Correct.
For safety, but I saw you had it because it's still communication.
It's, yeah, Fortified Florida is one of the first things that pops up anywhere, especially even for, there is an entire interface when students open up a Chromebook and Clever that provides for them and that is there as well. So, um, so yeah, and I think, I mean, this position is, is, it has evolved and if you remember, when I first started teaching, there really wasn't a huge need around here to market ourselves. There wasn't a lot of competition. We were the only.
A back, a back-to-school addition to the newspaper was about the biggest thing you had.
And, and so we have to, you know, it's, it's on, especially public education around this entire country has, has really had to step back and, and kind of look at things through a business model, recognize if we want people to trust us, there are some, there's some industry standards we need to uphold to ensure that we're doing our part to market ourselves and what we offer.
But I would wager without betting real money that because you were in the school as an administrator, you are able to, to better do this job with communication because you know, you felt the little things.
Yeah, well, I have a good team. I mean, I have Felicia who, who has a degree and hers is communication marketing. And she did this job for a long time without having the experience in the school. And so the two of us together, I can say things like, you know, no, today's not a good day for that or, you know, it's early release, so we don't do this earlier. You don't, you don't post that this day and things. So we do, I mean, I do have some experience there, but there's a lot I'm learning. Uh, we're both working on our APR accreditation and public relations certification. Um, and that is, it's going to be a lot of work, but we're both doing that, um, together and so. So we're trying and it is, um, this, this industry, I think when we, when Putnam went with Aptogee in twenty-twenty, there were, I think they served sixty, they had sixty employees serving, serving a few hundred school districts. They're up to over five hundred employees in three years. And the person that works with me works with a hundred and twenty school districts.
You can bet that everything you put on there that involves a child, whether it's an athletic or a, or an ag program or, or an academic award, regardless, they're going to be screenshotting their, their picture and that thing and they're going to get it reduced to a paper or somewhere and save it.
Sure, yeah.
Because that's, that's the equivalent of the kids going and clipping themselves out of the newspaper.
These again, back in the old days, we used to call them dropout prevention measures, ROTC. Uh, Mr. Pease programs, uh, which are second to none. And, and all the sports, uh, the academic, IQ team, uh, all, all of that makes that classroom, um, indirectly impacts the classroom.
Sure.
Because that child knows that if I don't get the grades, I don't play.
We were all motivated, motivated by something other than just enjoying algebra, every one of us, so.
So it all works to get more good.
I mean, we, I, every, you know, there's a lot of research to, to prove that kids that are involved even in just one piece outside of academics, that their, their ability to finish.
If I can ask, excuse me, if I can add, you know, how we engage with our community, especially at hurricane time or if there's a tragedy or a crisis. And a lot of times we will broadcast from the emergency operations center. And we used to video it and then play it later in the day, but we can do it instantaneously now. And, um, so that's a valuable service.
And I think, I think the other thing this district can be proud of, and I've learned talking to other districts is how much we collaborate with emergency, the, uh, emergency management and local sheriff's office, police departments. We are very blessed in this community to have leaders that do collaborate. And so, you know, people will often say things to me about, well, the sheriff's office posted this. I said, yes, she texted me first. Like, she and I, like, I know, when they're posting something, I know when it's going out.
Allison.
And, you know, and, and I'm like, yes, and they have, their, their posts get to be different than our posts. We don't, we don't post the things they get to post. We're a different organization than they are, right? And so our expectations and standards are different, but I promise you, like, yes, I'm aware. We talk, you know, like, it's, and, and people are like, oh, like, yeah, like, their purpose is different. And so, I mean, there's, you know, we, we are trying our best and, and Allison.
The stories you tell make so much difference because like Rick mentioned, nobody really understands it, that we have to collaborate because we're the ones that can feed them and let them sleep and have emergency generators or hurricanes. We're built to hurricane standards. That's what we do. And, you know, your stories that you put together online, uh, you know, for people to see just make a lot, all the difference, Ashley. It's really good.
The other cup, couple of things I want to add too, Ashley, is our, our new podcast that we're doing.
Yes.
And when my voice comes back, we're gonna continue.
Kick that back in, right?
But, uh, again, that's another thing that people listen to.
Yeah.
And, um, it was kind of foreign to me until I got involved with it. And the other thing I want to brag about is the fact that, um, we now have districts and other organizations reaching out to our team to actually come and speak at their districts or conferences or whatever, Florida and outside of Florida, because things are happening in Putnam County and people want to know about it. And I, I'm very proud of that. So a number of our staff have been invited to, to do that, so.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ashley.
Thank you.
Very good.
All right, so you're already here. I know it's been a long afternoon, but because you're already here, um, I would like to just have a few more minutes of your time to share some of the statewide accountability pieces that are coming so that you have some awareness with that and we can always talk more about that later. Um, Ashley did a nice job of kind of sharing some of those communication pieces and the, the thing when we think about accreditation that's important is when you're supposed to get all this stakeholder input and you're supposed to have all these surveys and all these people involved, if you don't have a connection with them, they're not going to fill that out for you, right? So there's just, communications is really important for us to have the data we need as evidence for accreditation. Uh, and so that's why we had her also shared today.
You sparked something. Mrs. McCool, is there any way or is it being done wherein we could track the number of people that, that go to the website and click various, awesome, awesome. And that can show the communication, yes.
Social media as well.
Awesome.
See like which.
Okay.
Stories get to those.
All right, I see.
Yeah, that's great.
All right, so in your blue folder, there's one more handout at the very back. Um, and it is a one-pager of this slide. This, there's a lot of print on this slide, but it is something that I want you to have. Uh, this slide just captures the timeline that we've been navigating over the past couple of years um, as state standards and state assessments and accountability measures have changed legislatively and through state board rule. So I'm not going to spend too much time on the past. You can read that for yourself, but I do want to kind of bring us to, um, some awareness of what has recently occurred. Uh, at the October eighteenth State Board of Education meeting, uh, the State Board of Education did adopt the commissioner's recommendations for fast performance expectations. And so I'm going to go into what those were so you can see what was adopted. Um, that did just occur and then in the next few months, there will be lots of retrofitting. There will be informational baseline school grades coming out here in probably December or January. Uh, and then as we talk about school grades specifically, I have a couple more slides to show you what is included in the baseline informational grades and what will be included in spring twenty-twenty-four. But this is a nice little timeline. I've shared it with principals before and it was helpful for them. Um, a couple of things for you to be aware of before I show you what cut scores were approved at the state board meeting. Um, those cut scores will be applied to progress monitoring two. So remember, the new statewide system has three times a year progress monitoring. Progress monitoring two will occur in our district in December and the reports that parents get will be the new cut scores. So I share that with you because when you see the cut scores, you will understand that they are very rigorous. And so whereas I, as a parent, may have had a student who scored a level three, I'm PM one. My PM two might be a level two. It might look like I'm going backwards, but that's because the scales are different. And so PM one will be retrofitted, but parents aren't going to get all of those new reports. So we have a lot of, um, support to do for our families over the next few months as they get retrofitted data. And that's just something for you to be aware of as well. The other thing I want you to be aware of is that for any students where that score was, um, critical. So in third grade reading or as a tenth grade ELA for graduation requirements, if you earned it, you earned it. So even if your score is retrofitted and it looks like you didn't, that we're not taking that away from you. So if you earned your tenth grade ELA requirement, you have earned it. We move on, even though the scale will be retrofitted and your, your, your assessment score might have changed or your level might have changed.
I read that and, and all I can see is where it says the results from this school year in order to provide an apples-to-apples comparison going forward for, to drive improvement. The state of Florida, really, in, in, in what they do with our schools, it's not apples-to-apples when they, when they try to declare failing schools. I just can't get over it. But anyway, I'll get off of that horse. Go ahead, Jonathan. I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. And, and the apples-to-apples piece is important because it's very hard. Um, it's, you can only go back and look historically and take that, you have to take that with a grain of salt because it was a completely different set of standards and different assessments.
Right.
So really, our baseline grades are where we will have to create our key performance indicators moving forward. Um, because otherwise we're creating them off of a completely different set of scores. Um, so that's important to note.
How do parents get that information?
How do parents get that information, like on the progress monitoring, like?
Through Skyward family portal.
So they, okay.
Yes. So if parents have access to Skyward family portal, those score reports are uploaded in there for them to see.
That's neat.
So a couple of other things to note when it comes to accountability, uh, this, this informational baseline set of grades that are released here in December or January, uh, those will be statistically equivalent. So for example, in the past, you had to have forty-one points out of a hundred in order to be a C school. That might not be the case because they're going to basically say, you know, if, if twenty percent of schools were an A the last time, which is back in 2022, then the top twenty percent are going to be an A this time, no matter how many points they have. So our, for this informational baseline set of grades, it's really hard for us to even be able to predict because we don't know where we will fall and the point scale is completely different. So when we talk about apples to apples, we have to be really careful in our conversations to make sure that we understand that a B to a B is not an apples to apples comparison, right? Because the points scale doesn't even matter, this informational baseline grade.
It's just, it's totally, it's totally meant to declare failing schools and it's going to historically be the same schools in the same communities. But I could be wrong. Please.
And the other piece of that is, um, with the informational baseline grades, there won't be any negative consequences, um, until 2024. So.
Okay. Thank you, Sandy. Because I was going to say, yeah, right.
Yeah, all right.
Trying to, we're trying to navigate that in a way that we end up better off than we did the last time around, right?
I hope so.
I'm sorry, Ms. Pickens, you had.
Well, if there's, the negative consequence could be that a school that is potentially a D or an F, it's not going to get any funding to, to work on and get them out of being a D or F, right?
Yes, until 2024. Yes, correct. So these slides, they're in your packet as well, but, um, what these slides show is for each grade level and ELA, the educator reactor panels that occurred over the summer, this is what they recommended. And then you can see on the third column, um, that was the commissioner's recommendation. And then that ultimately was what was approved by the state board. So you can see in many of the grade levels that's slightly higher. And then this next slide shows you where the percentage of ELA, when we think about the level, you're probably familiar with levels one, two, three, four, and five, right? That's what most families are familiar with. And so you can see here the percentages, um, when that cut score is applied to last year's data, you can see what the percentages would have been, um, for each of the levels. So if we look at something like 10th grade ELA, which we know is a graduation requirement, 11% of the students would have been a level five, seventeen percent would have been a level four, twenty percent would have been a level three, twenty-six percent would have been a level two, and then twenty-six percent would have been a level one. So if we know that a level three or higher is what you need in order to meet that graduation requirement, you can add up levels three through five and see that, um, forty-eight percent of students would have met that requirement based on last spring's, um, results. Okay? Then here's the same scale. This is in math for grades three through geometry. And so you can see the educator reactor panels and then what the commissioner's recommendation was that was ultimately approved. So in some grade levels and subject areas, they went with the recommendation and some it's slightly higher.
Jonathan, when they, um, first started, um, setting these, they had, wasn't there like several hundred teachers and other personnel that originally reviewed this before the reactor panel?
So there are two, there are two reactor panels. There's an educator reactor panel and then there's, um, then there's the rea, so there's, there's an educator panel and then there's a reactor panel. We were very fortunate to have one of, um, our district coaches, uh, Dr. Kristen Hudson from Teaching and Learning. She was actually selected to be on the educator, uh, panel in looking at the scores. Um, and then reactor panels involved outside. So reactor panels involved maybe leaders, community members, other people from other organizations. So you had two different, you had the educator panel and then you had your reactor panel. So these would be the breakdowns in, um, mathematics for each of the levels at each of the grades. Uh, so you're going to notice on this slide, and I'm going to get to it in a second, you also see grade K. So math grade K, math grade one, math grade two. And so we do have, uh, proposed, well, now approved achievement levels for K one and two as well. For those of you who aren't aware, you can pass either algebra one or geometry in order to meet that graduation requirement now. And so you can see there the percentages, um, had those scores been applied to last spring's data, what percentage of students would have passed algebra one and what percentage would have passed geometry. I mentioned K to two. So our students take K to two star assessments through Renaissance statewide as part of that coordinated progress monitoring system. And so you can see that the state is now proposing, um, and will have, because they've been approved, achievement levels for K one and two. And the, the cut scores and scale scores for each level are up there on this, on the slide for you. This will allow us to have conversations specifically between second and third grade. So we, you know, you mentioned third grade and the importance of that. In the past, um, outside of IREDDI, we've never had a statewide assessment that helped us speak the same language between second grade and third grade. And so having achievement levels now will allow us to have that conversation. Also approved at the state board meeting were the achievement level labels. So this is the label that's assigned to each level. And so you can see the current levels, then what the labels proposed by the educator panel were, what the labels proposed by the reactor panel were, and then what the final approved labels were by the state board of education. And then, like I said before, with progress monitoring two, families will be getting new reports that are aligned to this new fast scale and the achievement levels. And the K to two reading in math will be reported on this new fast scale with achievement levels and the unified scale. So this PM two that we do in December as our, as our district will start, they'll, the new reports will be reflective of this data and the labels. And then there will be retrofitting that happens. So the, the retrofitting that will happen with files being sent to our district for us to upload into Skyward and School City so that, that our teachers and leaders have access to that. They'll start with retrofitted files from last spring, PM three. That is the data that's going to be used to calculate these, calculate these informational baseline school grades. And then they'll go back and they will, um, retrofit PM one from this school year. And then they'll go back and retrofit PM one and PM two from last school year so that you have a five, a series of five assessments on the exact same scale. So you can really get a sense then of the entire picture of a child all the way back to fall 2022. And then, like I said before, they will not be provide, they will not be providing new individual student reports, um, for each of these. They'll just go into family portal. And then my last couple of slides just help you understand what components are included in the informational baseline school grades that'll come out here in about a month or two. And then the ones that'll come out in 2024 when full accountability comes back into place and all of the consequences are in place as well in 2024. So for our elementary schools who have K six, they will have ELA achievement, math achievement, and grade five science achievement only in their informational baseline grade. Then in 2024, they will have those three plus the brand new ELA grade three achievement cell. And then they'll have learning gains back. So you have ELA learning gains, also ELA learning gains of your lowest twenty-five percent of performing students. You'll have math learning gains and then math learning gains of your lowest twenty-five percent of your performing, um, performance students. And so, um, that's the difference between elementary. So you can see again, when we talk apples to apples, it's really hard because you're not even using the same components for those school grades, right?
It's just.
And then for our secondary schools, um, our seven, twelve schools, they will have for their informational baseline grade, to my knowledge, they will have these seven. I believe they will still have middle school acceleration, graduation rate and college and career acceleration. And then the four achievement cells, social studies is made up of civics and US history, which is seventh and eleventh grade. So the, that will be their informational baseline grade for secondary. And then in 2024, when full accountability is back in place, they will add in learning gains for ELA and learning gains for mathematics.
Mr. Hinky.
Yes, ma'am.
Are, are they, the teachers still being compensated, uh, for achieving highly effective, uh, effective and whatever they used to do back in the dark ages? Are they still doing that where they monetarily?
It's part of the scale for moving from one level to the next in your compensation package. It is not a large amount, but there is, if you, if you make that, then you move up the next level. You get, um, effective or highly effective, then you get to move up to the next level to then get, um, your compensation. It's like six hundred dollars.
Performance pay.
I don't think, I don't think.
In increments are pretty small.
Okay. And, and then what about the schools that, uh, achieve grades of like C, B? I mean, it was B and A.
School recognition funds?
Yes, school recognition. Is that still out there or they don't do that anymore?
They're liable.
We don't know.
Oh, okay.
Just because, well, we don't because that is something that the legislature, the legislature appropriates money for that. And.
Everything they're doing.
We didn't have it in 2023 because there were no school grades in 2023. But we had it in 2022. So it, it depends on what the legislature decides to do.
All this intricate weaving you see is designed to find a way to declare failing schools. And I'm telling you, no, it is because if you went back to norm reference testing in America, you would know what segments of the population were scoring similarly throughout the whole country. But when you've got a state that really, this is all about school choice and opening up opportunities, scholarships or, or charter schools, nothing wrong with having them, but it really, it, it just punishes that, and education is the whipping child of the all, you know, in America right now is real popular to say how bad schools are, but it, you know, if they'd go back to the, how they used to recognize the title one schools, and I've got the old pictures from commissioners of education that declared us, some of our schools as top performing schools and model schools in the state of Florida based on the kids they worked with here in Putnam County, but you can't, it doesn't work that way anymore. You could have the, the highest performing title one school in the state of Florida and it's going to be an F school. And, and, you know, US News and World Report are liable to take it and make it front page as one of their top performing schools, which you, you do it here. It's just different. It's a total set of different scales. And I understand the intent is, is to funnel money to, you know, and. I started out of college in, in a, in a private school and people wanted, they wanted tax tuition credit for paying, you know, the kid to go to private school. So all this is, it's unfortunate, but that's, we've got to, to direct a whole segment of our instructional program just to try to meet these standards. And it, and it takes your eye off the, what I said was the essential and non-essential needs of the individual student, but there you go.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, I was just going to say, looking at our strategic plan and, and I'm sure other districts have it as well. That has come the closest, in my opinion, to making sure that no child is left behind doing what David said. Even, even if that child may not achieve here, he has shown, or she has shown some growth. You are concerned about that child and moving them. So I.
Yeah, just to comment on learning gains, like traditionally our schools do a really phenomenal job and our teachers do a phenomenal job of growing our students from what they get, right? So no matter where they're coming from, we have lots of families moving to Florida. Like, um, Mr. Buckle said earlier, anyone who walks through our doors, right? We, we work to educate them. But our schools do a really great job with learning gains. And so when you think about, um, these informational baseline grades not having that strength included because it's only achievement, um, that also is, is something to keep in mind just because we can grow our students more than a year and we talk all the time. You can talk to our teachers. We talk about stretch growth and really growing students. The only way they get caught up is if you, when you get them, grow them more than a year. Because otherwise you're just growing them a year, but they're still behind, right? So, you know, we work really hard at learning gains in our classrooms and our teachers do a great job of that. Um, and that just won't be included in the informational baseline grades. It'll be included again in 2024.
Look at our students that come and they not speak any English whatsoever.
We grow them too.
And yet our teachers, yes, sir.
Yes, they do.
And, and so it's a, it's a reality, but the work is there. I mean, they're putting forth the effort to make sure that that child grows.
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to comment, uh, over the last seven years under the leadership of, uh, Ms. France in the instruction, curriculum and instruction, we have grown, uh, exponentially as far as, you know, our curriculum instruction. You know, we've really taken a district-led, um, attitude, if you will, philosophy, to raising the tide of our entire district. And again, want to remind you, we had coming in, how many schools in turnaround at one time? Eight out of a, or I'm sorry, eleven out of eighteen at one time? And we have.
Some zero, yes.
So again, we've done some revolutionary things. Mr. Hinky has really been on the cutting edge as far as, you know, the, um, school grades and accountability and, you know, he comes from that background. And a lot of our initiatives and our systems have really been because of Mr. Hinky. And, and of course, Ashley McCool basically built our communications and our community relations department from scratch. So I just commend all three of them. We are in great hands and you haven't seen the best things yet. Things are really going to take off.
And that's why when we see, and I, I know it's all of us, when we see the agenda, the item and we open up and, and, um, wherein, say Dr. Coleman was requesting something, it actually spells out what pillar it, it, it supports. Is this academic, you know, and, and things like that, that's appreciated because we know then that if nothing else, it's a focus. And, and I mean, without a vision of people perish.
You know, one thing I'm, I'm really proud of, and we have, I think I told you, sixteen new superintendents in the state of Florida since this time last year. And the only thing I'm going to say about that is when you bring in a new superintendent, you bring in a whole new team. You bring in whole new systems, whole new ways of doing business.
A continuity of leadership.
And all I'm saying is we have put, we have had time to build things, improve them. And I think what you're seeing now is a culmination of just systematic structures in place. And, um, I think it's beginning to pay off. Yeah. You agree, Ms. France?
I do.
And, and the children are the, are the beneficiary.
That's right.
Of, of all this that, that you, you're doing and putting in place. And, and I may not have been able to say it if I had not been in the system and, and watched it. And, but the things that are out there are simple enough that, that people can navigate our web, our website. I mean, it's, it's not rocket science.
We appreciate you, Jonathan.
It's, it's there.
Keep it up.
You know, so.
That's all we have.
Great stuff, great stuff.
Thank you.
That will keep you longer if you want.
No, no, this is.
Enough for now, but, but enough to fill us and send us forward.
And to clarify, I have the documents that we used today in a, um, Google Drive. Can I just share that with the group?
Mm, sure. Is it okay?
Just to make sure.
One large. Yeah. Just don't talk about it. See y'all in November.